Good afternoon. It is three P M and I'll call to order the Board of Directors' regular meeting study session for Thursday, July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyer Hoffman.
Here.
Director Duff.
Here.
Director Martin.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Present.
President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you. We have four.
Thank you. And seeing that all directors are present, we'll skip item three. Item four, rules of procedure. Counselor?
I don't have any announcement today, but I do understand that there's.
Mr. Pinkney, your microphone, please.
Said I don't have anything to report on the rules of procedure today, but I do understand that the, uh, at least one of the directors and the general manager may wish to move the closed session item and therefore, one way to do that is to make a motion or for one of the directors to make a motion and then for that motion to be seconded and voted upon. And then I'd also recommend that, um, at that time, while the directors are in closed session, if they choose to do so, that there be somebody here in the uh, meeting room so that if anyone from the public arrives, they can be told that, oh, they're in closed session so that it doesn't appear that the meeting is canceled or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. And, um, with that, a couple of housekeeping items. One will be that we'll be requesting action today on item eight, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-one. And that's amending the classification and compensation plan for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. And then the second, um, which was stated is we'd like to move the closed session items twenty-four and twenty-five to follow public input. So to follow item five. Um, and with that, we would need a motion to do so. Do we have a motion to?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to move the closed session to after item five. May I have a roll call, please? A roll call vote?
Director Meyer Hoffman.
Yes.
Director Duff.
Yes.
Director Martin.
Yes.
Vice President Griffith.
Yes.
President Sewell.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item five, public input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board?
President Sewell, not online.
And seeing no one here in the boardroom, we will now, uh, move into closed session. Well, reconvene from closed session. Counselor, can you report out?
Yes. Uh, closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point ninety-one and or two and or three, one case, no reportable action. Conference with legal counsel, potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D four, one potential case, no reportable action.
Thank you. Item six, human resources report. And real quick, did we have any members of the public, uh, join us while we were in closed session?
President Sewell, we did not.
Item six, human resources report will do Monday?
Yes, yes, President.
Action items. Item seven, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty, conflict of interest code update. It is recommended that resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty, amending the Mission Springs Water District Conflict of Interest Code be adopted.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. I'll ask our Assistant General Manager Marion Champion to give this presentation.
Good afternoon, Board. President Sewell. Uh, the Conflict of Interest Code designates which individuals must file a statement of disclosure statement commonly known as a Form seven hundred or a statement of economic interest. We update this form every year based on assigned duties. Because of the recent changes in the district's organizational structure, staff recommends that we make one update, and that is to remove the government and public affairs manager position. But this is a very straightforward item. Um, that's, that's all I really have to share.
Sorry, any clarification you just said? You're talking about seven hundred form?
Yes.
We're gonna do what with it now?
We will be, we update our staff and who's required to, uh, fill that form out. And based on duties, it is recommended that we just remove the one position that's on our current list.
Okay, so the rest of it still has to be?
Yes.
Any other questions? Director Meyer Hoffman? Director Duff? Vice President? Thank you. Item eight, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-one, amending the classification and compensation plan for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four dash two thousand twenty-five. It is recommended to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-one, amending the employee classification and compensation plan for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. And just a reminder, we do want to take action on this item today. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Uh, as you mentioned, we would like to have, uh, action taken on this, uh, just so it doesn't impact any of our employees, even though it's a very small amount of a rounding error, possibly sense in most categories as Oriana will talk about. Uh, we don't want to issue checks. Uh, this would be the, today would be the first day we'd issue checks. We want to make sure they're right going out the first time versus having to do extra work or extra effort by our accounting group. So Oriana?
Yes, thank you. Um, good afternoon. President Sewell, members of the board, I am sharing my screen. Are you able to see it?
Yes.
Okay. The updated salary matrix corrects some minor rounding errors in our current salary, salary matrix. The errors were produced by the way Excel rounds up or down when we select, um, that results of an equation be shown with two decimal points. The Excel formula itself is correct, um, but it kept compounding the error up or down, and I had examples here. So we have now manually rounded the hourly wage, and although the difference is only a cent here or a cent there, um, the updated salary matrix presented today for your approval corrects these minors, this minor rounding error. Um, are there any questions?
Director Duff? Vice President? Director Martin?
No.
Director Meyer Hoffman? And, uh, no questions for me. Thank you, Oriana. With that, do we have a motion to approve item eight?
I'll move.
We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Director Meyer Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Duff?
Aye.
Director Martin?
Yes.
Vice President Griffith?
Aye.
President Sewell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Before we go to the next item, I believe council had suggested that we also act on this again on Monday, just to make sure that everybody understands that this wasn't a, a rash decision or it was something was well thought out. Just to make sure there's any clarifications moving forward. So even though we did have action and it did pass, you'll see it again on Monday as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-two, adopting an administrative code. It is recommended to approve resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-two, adopting an administrative code.
Thank you, President Sewell. Again, I would ask Assistant General Manager Marion Champion to, uh, discuss this item. We also have on the line Caitlin Empy who helped us, uh, put together the document and go into, uh, the document that you see, because I know that some, uh, some folks have looked this over and, and noticed that there are some things in there that don't make sense with today's laws, but we'll go over why we did what we did and how we're going to be moving forward. So Marion?
Good afternoon. Let me just finish sharing the screen real quick. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Again, thank you for letting me come up here and give you some information. We're quickly, the purpose of the codification and this agreement or this document is to bring order and organization to all of our different ordinances and our resolutions. Uh, think about seventy years that we have been adopting ordinance, ordinances and resolutions, things that govern our district. But really, the only way to access those documents are to go back, look inside the board agenda packets, go back, review board actions and really kind of put, uh, to look for things. And from an employee perspective, that's a lot of work for us to go back and find things, but it's almost even impossible for a, a regular customer or so, somebody from our community. So really, this document that we're putting together is not creating anything new. It's not or changing any of our existing resolutions or ordinances. It's only to bring order and focus to what we've already adopted. Some of the reasons that you may want to have the benefits of a codification include, you know, accessibility. It makes our governing documents more accessible and, uh, more friendly for members of the public and for, uh, employees. For consistency, it makes it so that we can be consistent with our documents so that, uh, we have one tone, one voice. Uh, legal certainty, you know, this will help, uh, reduce any ambiguity and promote more predictability moving forward. Efficiency, having a single code simplifies research, making more efficient, uh, searches for our customers and for employees. And lastly, the big one for me is transparency. Um, it, this codified system really allows both our customers and the community that we serve that to see that transparency and see what it is that are our governing documents. And I think, you know, that's one thing that, you know, General Manager Macy has, has made a point of. He's the one who started this originally, and he saw the need for this, and I think it's a really good move in the right direction. The process is pretty straightforward. First, we had to gather and review to see what, what we really had. Next, we started to classify all of these documents, collecting them and then putting them into different categories. Then we needed to organize them once they were classified within each category. And then consolidation. Those items were then collected into basically one single large document, and that's why your packet was so large. Um, and then we will be adding that to the website so it's accessible to anyone in the public. And one of the things that is the, the big thing for us is that we do need to do some cleanup. Um, and I'm sure that most of you saw that when you started looking through things, especially the fun one that everyone pointed out to me was section two point zero, one point zero, three, zero. And that's no smoking in the boardroom. Um, that's a real easy one. You can find that on, just right there off the top. That's something that needs to be cleaned up. But in general, you know, we did find some circular references. We found some, some ordinances that were pointing back to each other. You know, those things all need to be systematically cleaned up. And what we would like to do is get this, the agreement that we're going to codify these documents, and then we're going to systematically bring them back to you each month so that we can look at each section one at a time and make sure that we're giving them the due diligence. If we were to take the seven hundred page document and start redlining it, you would not want to sit here and try to go through it during a board meeting, and we would not want to do that. And so I think it's fair that we actually look at everything um, one piece at a time. Um, I do have, um, I started on the website kind of to see what it would look like, and I can pull you up and, and show you kind of what that would look like. One moment here. It is still a lot of information, and it'll be a lot, uh, to, to really review, but you could see we would have a table of contents. And then from there, you'll jump to the different provisions with the sections laid out.
You on the website?
Oh, I can't see it. Sorry. Um, let me try resharing.
Yeah, resharing.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Perfect. So, uh, I'm gonna go back as well. So this would be, uh, the, the beginning of the layout. And you can see there's a table of contents with the titles of each of the different sections, and then we would hyper late link back into each of those so that everything is laid out very organized and very straightforward to the public. And again, this is not changing anything that we have adopted in the past. This is just simply organizing everything that we've done. And then as we move forward, when we adopt a new resolution, we adopt a new ordinance, your staff agendas will actually, uh, tie back to this and it will show how it's going to change with, within the codification. Have I missed anything, General Manager Macy?
Uh, the only thing I was going to mention, and this is a good stopping point. First of all, Caitlin's also on the call. She was instrumental in walking us through this process and actually keeping it, even though it's a voluminous effort, she was the one that was doing a lot of the background work, but also the one that convinced us that this was the way to go because we really did want to bring to you a finished document. But once we got into seeing all the circular references and how many things were wrong, it was going to be a little bit too much to do all at one time, and we knew we wanted to get this out as quickly as we could. This particular screen tells a very good point. Let's just take the first one, the district logo. If we, we are going to be bringing back, if we wanted to change that, we'd have to bring back a resolution that would change that. So, and then you would, we'll put in parentheses, it's actually sort of the opposite of what we have now, and then it would reference section two point one. So the resolution would actually be updated, and then it would, then we would show how it would impact the codified ordinance or the codified position. So from that perspective, uh, we are not, this is a pause point. I think the layout that we had, we're, we're number five. We got one more step to do, and that's going to be the one that's probably going to take the most time. But, uh, and we do expect to have a lot of, um, feedback from people that have never seen this and say, well, is this correct or not correct? Because some of them have been in a vault for a very long time. So, uh, it, you know, you shine a light on these types of things and you clean it up and you move forward, but I think it's going to be a much better document, a lot easier one to follow. And it's some of the cleanup items are, have been overdue for some time, so. Yeah, I got just an observation. This is kind of a nitpicking thing, and I, I apologize. But there are other products other than tobacco that were smoked, and that's it looks like you're limiting to just tobacco. If somebody set up a joint here and they wouldn't be in violation. So maybe we should put on there no smoking, parentheses, tobacco, cannabis, or et cetera. And, and this is why I really thank, uh, Caitlin for walking us, because this one is an obvious one that we wanted to change because we, and we actually have the authority to. If you recall in one of our last actions related to handbooks and things like that, you gave us the authority to clean up these things that are dictated by other laws, other codes. But to do that, we would have lost some of the historical references and not tied them together if we would have changed it and adopted this as its own document. So, again, I appreciate every, all the input that we got from our legal counsel going through this because the, the roadmap could have gone a couple of different ways, but the way they, the, the way they let us down, the one we selected, I think is the best for all of us. But that's, yeah, that's the obvious one. Yeah, no more smoking cigars. Based on what this section says, it's been prohibited for some time.
Any other questions, Director Meyer Hoffman? Director Duff?
I first want to say thank you for doing this because being new to the district, trying to piece together pieces is very complicated for me. And I can only imagine for developers and others, and I always have to take staff time to help me find things that I'm looking for. This is fantastic. I, I had questions and concerns, uh, yesterday that I shared with the general manager. Um, and he reassured me, your plan is great to bring these back in sections after you've codified them further, after you've eliminated circular references and updated laws and things like that. So this is fantastic. Um, the only thing I wanted to add after getting to see your website, uh, idea is it needs to have a search function so that people can search a keyword and it'll link them to any of the codes or, or resolutions that included that. Thank you. Great work.
Vice President?
Uh, yeah, so I have a whole list of things that I found, and obviously the first one was the big one I said should include vaping, okay? Um, but I do think that we need to, if, if you're going to publish this and then do corrections, you need to immediately jump on, uh, two, zero, two, zero, one, zero. This is an election year. And there is stuff in here that, um, is probably not appropriate, such as number four may reside anywhere in the district. Since we do elect by division and that is not proper, I think that we should maybe at least fast track that section to get that fixed as soon as possible.
Go ahead.
Sorry. To, to piggyback off of what you just said, we, we can't, um, it also doesn't say that for the entire term that the director is appointed or is elected. Maintain residing in that district. It doesn't say that anywhere. Prior to putting your name down on the list, you have to reside. So, yeah, I agree. Possibly before publishing it to the website, those simple ones should be fixed since it's an election year.
And I think my questions have already been answered, but I know it's been something we've talked about for a long time, and it seemed like a no-brainer that it should all be in one place, but I know the execution of that was a pretty big, uh, task. So I'm glad we're this far along in the process, and I appreciate all the work done so far.
As we start to move these items to you from our perspective, bringing to during a workshop where it's a more open discussion about the language that should be changing and how it's going to change. I know there's a specific rule in the handbook that we want to look at first. We were anticipating bringing it to the workshop and then following up during the study session and the meeting as we've done other things. Uh, just wanted to confirm with the board that that was the, the path forward as we start modifying these things.
But not in its entirety.
No, we'll, we'll break it down and.
Thank you. Or multiple sections at a time, but yeah, not the whole thing.
Because I know we have a lot of notes, both staff and our legal counsel has a lot of ideas of how to change this and clean it up. So we have a lot of the work done, but we do want to do it in smaller chunks because it will get voluminous very quickly. And I want to make sure that each issue is thoroughly vetted because, uh, we put a lot of time and effort to get here, and I want to just make sure that's the best it possibly can be. So, uh, we'll work definitely with, with Caitlin and make sure that we get that taken care of, so.
I really like the idea of doing the board, or the workshop, um, for at least the discussion part. I feel like that would really muddy up our board meetings if we're trying to go through all this. So I think that's a perfect plan.
Since she did a lot of the work, do you have any comments to add to any of our efforts?
Um, I, I think this was a great job. Um, really collaborative, me and Brian worked together and other city staff, but this is just the beginning. Um, I know a lot of these references are outdated. You know, some of these go back to the fifties. A lot of them go back to the eighties, and it's going to be a, a lot of work, but I think we'll prioritize what are the most important sections to come back with you and go through and, and make the changes. The good thing is now we can see what some of the issues are that we may not have been able to see before. So I think this is a great first step. Um, but there's still a long way to go. So I'm, I'm glad we're getting it before you now, and, um, we'll prioritize bringing some of these sections before you again to get updated and, um, in date.
Great, thank you. Anything further from staff? Any other question, comment? Thank you very much. Item ten, contract amendment number one with Lane Christensen Company for the downhole rehabilitation of well forty-two. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to execute contract amendment number one with Lane Christensen Company for site work and well fitting for well forty-two in the amount of two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars from three million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents to four million, seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Augment the capital improvement budget for job number one, 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 four, seven in the amount of two hundred and thirty-four thousand from four million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand to four million, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, and do all things necessary to complete the project.
Thank you, President Sewell. I will ask our engineering manager, Eric Webb, to take this item. Eric?
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Uh, good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Item ten of this afternoon's agenda pertains to executing a contract amendment with Lane Christensen Company for performing some downhole well rehabilitation. Now initially in two thousand twenty-one, the well forty-two, uh, well forty-two construction project was started and it was delayed due to supply impacts, supply chain impacts to well equipment and especially electrical components. Now that the necessary components are available and the project is ready to resume, the project hydrogeologist recommended a video survey of the well casing to confirm the condition, the condition of the well to verify its current condition and its capability of water production. So in early April of this year, a video survey was completed, and the video showed encrustation and a significant portion of the, of the screen louvers at the bottom of the well where water comes in were clogged. And, uh, they must be remediated before the installation of the downhole well equipment, such as the pump and the motor. While MSWD and the project team anticipated some minor downhole rebuild rehabilitation, um, for example, minor brushing and bailing due to the well sitting idle for a period of time. The video survey identified a more in-depth and aggressive rehabilitation would be required, which includes, uh, brushing and bailing and chemical treatment as well as swabbing. This contract amendment and budget augmentation is solely for the contractor and will allow them to complete the necessary downhole well, well rehabilitation and ultimately complete this capital improvement. And we expect that it will be complete by the end of this calendar year. The money we are asking for, for the chemical treatment as well as restoring the project contingency because there remains some, uh, above-ground work left to be completed. Now, we anticipate construction starting back up in late August or even sooner and being complete by the end of this calendar year. Are there any question? I'm sorry. I apologize. Uh, this is some of the background. This is what I talked about. And so a solution to the, uh, downhole, um, screen being clogged would be a chemical treatment with these, uh, items, uh, to be done. And, uh, here's some, just some general pictures of the site. Uh, the photo on the left is actually, uh, Wayne, Lane, uh, drilling the well some time ago. And then the picture on the right is a completed, is the completed wellhead with the sounding tube, transducer and gravel tube. And so that's, that's the site there, um, looking westerly. Are there any questions?
Director Duff? Vice President?
Um, yeah, I just have a question. We talked about there was a delay because of supply chain. We're ready to go. Now we're bringing this. And so we're saying construction will be started at the end of August. Um, that's about what, five weeks from now? So I'm just kind of curious if this goes through, what would be the reason for that delay?
The delay was when, was, so they drilled the well, and then there was the, the plan was when they did the first test pumping, they got like the twenty-two hundred gallons a minute. When they did the well after it was drilled, they got like twenty-seven hundred gallons a minute. So at that point, we had a decision to make. When we made that decision to get, basically grab all the capacity we could, then that changed the, the motor and pump itself because they didn't order it until after that step. And the problem then, that's about when COVID hit. So, okay, but. I'm asking, so we said now and it's in, and we're talking about if we do this, instruction will start needing, obviously. Why the five week delay? I'm, I'm sorry. So when we started this project back off, we, we didn't want to have a start and stop again. So we are not allowing them to start until all the items are delivered or here in a warehouse somewhere. We don't want to get them started and then have them pull off again. So we're actually, when we were negotiating some of our change orders, wanted to make sure that they had all the items here before they got started again. And what we're talking about is the, the drawing on the right is probably pretty close. It's graded a little bit differently, but that's all that's sticking out. So everything above ground is going to be coming in, the motor control centers, the top, the, the, the pump itself, the motor that sits on top, the header pipes, all those types of different things. And it's going to look more like, if you go out to two bunch, it's got that rollaway building and those types of things. That rollaway building is one of the change orders, if you recall, because we've been housing it for so long. So everything is going to be here at one time. That's why we're waiting.
So what, what you're saying is we're waiting for a quick, we're, we're waiting for supplies?
Still waiting.
Okay.
Still waiting for the pump and things of that nature.
Okay.
But once they get here, then we'll start with the chemical treatment and then
Okay.
cascade through.
Director Martin, any questions on the item? Director Meyer Hoffman?
Yes, you say chemical treatment, you're going to go down inside this picture that we see and clean it, correct? It goes down with a thousand, twelve hundred feet.
I believe there'll be a, uh, what they call a trimmy pipe that will be, um, lowered down, and then the, uh, chemicals will be, um, pressurized and put down the pipe and mix in with the water that's down there, and then the contractor will lower the, um, brushing and bailing equipment and perform a pump test and surging and bailing and, and agitating the louvers on the screen to clean them off. And that chemical will, um, um, dissolve, it seeks to dissolve that, that encrustation. And then it'll be bailed out.
Maybe I missed it. One of my hearing aids is working. How far down does it go?
Uh, I believe from, um, my information, it's about a thousand feet. It goes down as deep as a thousand feet.
That's close enough, thousand, twelve. I think some of them go down like twelve hundred, don't they?
They do. Some of the ones, if you think about going uphill into the mountains, the elevation of the water stays the same. So the ground, the below, uh, feet below ground is a little bit different the higher you go up.
Here's, here's the other thing I, I didn't notice, and I, maybe I'm missing it, but I looked through, might as well get it all the way now for the other. I never see any breakdown on how many man hours. I never see any breakdown on how many man hours, how much the equipment costs. And, but I, I keep seeing these different wells and sometimes maybe it's just in my head, but it seems like some of these wells keep coming up. For more and more money. But what are we paying for here exactly? Or on any of them? How can we, can we get a breakdown on that? Do we have what future work needs to be done at each site or reservoir? What the projected cost is going to be in the next year?
I believe you're touching on the next item, the well prioritization. That's exactly what that, that, that is going to help us make those types of decisions. But going back to I think your other question about man hours and things like that, typically when we get things, we don't get them by man hours. We get them by labor and materials and then a total. That's how most of the public works projects are bid. So that's the information we can provide. That's the stuff that's given to us by the contractor.
You know, I, I kind of went to school for a little bit, not just bigger stuff, but smaller. So you say labor, man hours, labors, there a difference there or how, what's the labor cost in office?
Well, we can tell you what, how, how, it depends on what the line item is and what the bid is. Some of them may be per linear feet like a pipe and it's just labor per linear foot. Or it could be a lump sum. It could be whatever the labor is to do that one activity. Your question was about hours. We do not have hours. We don't ask for that information, but we do track it once they're on site as part of the construction and inspection.
Well, if you don't know how much labor it's going to be, how do you know this is a, a good estimate?
Well, um, in the, in the, in the um, agenda packet, sir. Uh, at the very back, I believe there's a change order request from Lane and it's kind of got green, um, a green uh, headers at the top. And so it identifies, you know, the mobilization for this um, rehab and then it goes by all the different items. Um, say for instance, um, item number uh, twenty-one, it talks about removal and of test pump and discharge. Uh, so it's about thirty hours um, to do that. And uh, as well as uh, video, uh, roto scrubbing, um, airlifting. So some of this is done by hours, but that's, I believe that's equipment hours. And I believe also that um, given what um, General Manager Macy said, a lot of these um, other costs. Do include um, uh, labor, uh, because that's how uh, companies typically do it. They, they incorporate their labor and their equipment costs into one cost, into one item, or I'm sorry, one unit.
Just kind of took for granted that that green page was some of their qualifications again.
It's very detailed.
All right. It's, yes, it is detailed and that gives me a good start and we appreciate it. Thank you.
And I have nothing further. Thank you very much, Eric. Moving on to item eleven, contract amendment number two with Kyle Groundwater Incorporated. To develop a well rehabilitation prioritization program. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to execute contract amendment number two with Kyle Groundwater Incorporated. To develop a well rehabilitation prioritization program in the amount of seventeen thousand seventy dollars. From seventy-three thousand, two hundred and six to ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and to do all things necessary to complete the project. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. I'll ask our Director of Operations Danny Friend to give this presentation. Danny?
Uh, thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell, members of the board. Uh, a little background before, uh, this item. Is an amendment number two. Uh, in the packet, there is the original agreement and amendment one. And many of the people on this board never saw it because of the fact that it met the general manager's authorization limit. So with this change is why it's coming to, to the actual board for, for authorization. I also like to say that amendment one was an extension, um, an additional year of extension. Now I'll provide the actual background of what this is. Uh, after addressing unexpected repairs, well repairs, several uh, reactive repairs. Uh, staff determined in order to proactively address future maintenance, well maintenance, we had to have a well maintenance program. And one of the things that we had to do is first prioritize the, the actual, which wells need to come first. That led to staff entering into an agreement in July of twenty twenty-two with Kyle Groundwater. You'll see his information in the staff report as far as his um. What, what his expertise is as well as his, his experience and all the, uh, work that he's done in his proposal as part of the original agreement. Uh, the approach of that, at that time was a data acquisition, understanding what we had. Um, part of that would have requested additional data that we didn't have and we would make those. The conditional assessment or analysis would have been the next part, leading to the actual well uh, rehab prioritization schedule. And the current contract uh, provides well re- um, well rehabilitation, uh, technical plans and specifications. Uh, I'm sorry, technical specifications on how to do the, the well reh- rehabs. And then lastly, some bid support. Uh, to, uh, the top three ranked, the top highest to actually put in the front end documents, the technical plans and specifications so that we can actually get that out. Uh, and the unfortunate part is before we can actually get started on all that, we had to address additional uh. Well failures, mechanical breakdowns. And I think, I, I don't have a presentation, but what I do have is a slide that staff put together before we could. Just so I can just get an idea of what we've got going on this place. So in this slide, it, this is actually not intended for the meeting, but it's intended to. It's intended to provide uh, just a, a breakdown. So there are wells twenty-two on the left and you'll see it go through twenty-four all the way down to thirty-seven. And those are thirteen wells that the district has permitted and, and technically in operation. Of those thirteen wells, five have had to have had reactive um. Work through Kyle Groundwater to, to basically provide us a technical specification on the, on the downhole rehab. So that we can get that work done. On the other eight wells at, at various times, uh, we're keeping us uh, uh, afloat, if you will. Uh, one of the things that I'll, I'll point out is in the green, uh, refers to the, the rehab work. Uh, the red will point out that there hasn't been evaluated yet. Um, well twenty-four is currently offline. However, the repair work has been, there's been a recommendation. Uh, as well as, uh, the other thing that I'll, I'll point out is well thirty-four, it's currently under, um, it's being rehab now. It says rehabbed in twenty-four, but it's currently being rehabbed. And again, those were all provided by Kyle Groundwater. The information that we typically gather is uh, downhole video, uh, EMDS study. And from that, they would, they would determine the level or the aggressiveness that you heard in the prior item that was discussed uh, of the rehab. So, um, one of the other things that we also had to do is uh, we took a part in the technical assistance. And the general technical support services that were offered through this contract. And the district had to do a D swap for two wells. We, we had done a sanitary survey. Of the main system, the state determined that they didn't have a, what they call a, uh, we call it the D swap. It's a drinking water source assessment plan. And that's a requirement. So we, we use, it's one of the technical services he provides. And so we did it under the scope of this contract. Uh, as well as some other uh, respond to water quality issues and, and other things reactively. What we're doing today is amendment two is to true up the scope and to true up the cost to take care of the extra work that was never really contemplated. But actually fell within the scope. So we're truing up the, the, the contract to do that. So that is the part where we're adding the additional seventeen thousand seventy dollars. To true it up to ninety thousand dollars. So General Manager, did I, did I miss anything?
Uh, no, the only question I have is in the packet, we talk about amendment number two, but I know we did a lot of changing and of scope and things like that. Tracking how we got to each step with each well. And those typically aren't in our documents as far as a contract because they're more. One, one of the things that we were trying to clean up in our own world is when we say contract amendment, it's actually amendment with the contractor or a service. And then we have change orders which are specific to the task orders that are there. So sometimes you'll, you'll see the change orders and sometimes you won't. The change orders is what we were working with, with Kyle. And we were changing what he was actually doing, but staying within the contract that is there.
That's true. I appreciate that clarification. Is those change orders in this? So they're not necessarily identified that way, but they're identified in, and I actually took, I, I don't have the actual item in front of me, but I believe four point one and four point two. Um, that is part of the packet. You'll see that what the changes that General Manager Macy is referring to is, are those task changes? And that's why we're admitting that contract. So they, they fell within the scope, but not specifically as to what we use them for. For example, technical support writing. Well, yes, that's your specialty. You guys, you know, are on site for, as a hydrogeologist to build new wells or, or to oversee new wells. So that's one of the documents they provided. So that's why we reached out to them and utilized this, this instrument. And like, as I mentioned, this is one of those items that we're looking forward to now that we're starting to see a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. To get back onto the actual prioritization and not be reactive, but get back to the intent of what this contract was intended for.
Any questions, questions or comments, Director Martin, Director Mya?
I see here, we have seven in the red wells. I know, I was sitting here thinking how we could figure out how much an estimated cost to do all of it, but that would be almost impossible with it. So how do we go about knowing how much money we'll need? To get these evaluated and fixed? And how long will it take before we actually do get an evaluation on it?
So the original contract has the scope in, in the background and part of that, as I mentioned, is the bid support services, also the rehabilitation plan. So they will develop the technical specifications for all of the wells. Then they'll determine which of the three highest priority and this contract scope will also provide is the front end documents, the engineer's estimate. And then we would go through the process of requesting the project. Uh, the balance of that. Uh, one of the things that Russ Kyle, it's Russell Kyle is the name of, is, is the principal of the actual of Kyle Groundwater. And what Russell has done for the district on, on many cases and, and I'll, and let me back up for a second. The very bottom of this, it actually has two different wells. So I meant to actually add a header before I probably provided it to Kurt, but. Uh, those are wells that are under construction. Uh, Kyle Groundwater has provided the actual work plan and the rehabilitation uh, uh, recommendations for thirty-five. Through all the different items, and I'm going to use thirty-five as an example. He has given us, hey, that should be approximately ten thousand dollars for this phase and another twelve thousand dollars for that phase. He's almost hit these fairly spot on within a thousand dollars or two. So. The answer to your question is, is we'll have specific information for three of the highest prioritized wells and we'll have estimated costs. So in the priority of order, when we get to four, five, six and seven, right now they're not, they're, they're organized by, by, by my number, by well's number. But when this project is completed, we'll know what three of the wells, because they're going to be actually uh, front end documents designed and, and planning documents. And then the remainder will have estimations. And then we'll bring that back to the board as, as we, as we bring capital projects to the board.
That sounds good. We're talking uh, seventy-three thousand dollars approximately is what the end cost will be to get this done?
That is correct.
Well, ten thousand dollars well to get, it seems reasonable.
It's a very reasonable.
And the information we're going to get back and that's going to help.
It'll be a strategic document going forward. And at that point in time, it'll also set the intervals. So. We would have done all this work if nothing actually happened and we'd have to react. And then we would have determined out of the thirteen wells, which one to start first. But unfortunately, some mechanical failures decided that for us. And then now that they actually have been rehabbed. Likely from my experience, they're going to be at the bottom of the list. We're going to focus on the wells that haven't been completed yet.
Right. Thank you, Hannah. Appreciate it. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Friend.
You're welcome.
Director Duff, any questions?
Uh, yeah, so I just want to kind of take a little step back for a second. The additional seventeen thousand and seventy dollars will be sufficient, according to Kyle. To evaluate the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven wells that have yet to be evaluated by him and all necessary to do so.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, second thing, um, the total for this prioritization program is actually going to be costing us ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy-six, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Um, one thing I'm noticing on all of the contracts that have been brought forward, and I'm just making this as a general statement. The work that you said had to be done on this particular contract with Kyle. For the, the, the wells that ended up requiring immediate prioritization due to going down, right? The evaluation done by Kyle, I can understand would, would fit into that existing contract to, to pri- to, to develop a prioritization. Um, but on some of these other contracts, it appears as though we're having to ask for more money to extend the contract. And this isn't necessarily directed at you. You're just standing there. So I'm sorry for staring at you, Mr. Friend. Um, uh, but it appears as though we're having additional work done. That is maybe not necessarily spelled out in the, in the contracts. That is then requiring us to come back and get more money to complete those unknowns that came up in the process. And I just want to make sure that when we do that, we're, we're making sure that, that what should have been a separate contract. Is not being lumped into one that could then potentially cause not only accounting trouble. But a cause um, legal and, and um, litigation trouble. Because if you have one contract. And it's covering, you know, various different sites and various different scopes of practice. And then you add to those and delete from those all under the same contract, becomes kind of a muddy mess if something goes wrong. As far as litigating those details and unraveling the contract. So I'm just making a, an in general con- con- uh, observation. That I understand with, with inflation and all of those things going up, that that's going to be necessary on a lot of these. But if we're doing work that was potentially outside of the original scope. Maybe we needed to get a specific amendment for that additional work versus coming back later for more money to the contract. Because we did things that weren't initially in that first contract and, and backpedaling in that way. Does that make sense, General Manager? Am I, am I making my observation? Okay.
It, it goes to showing the steps that it were in between, like we were talking about when we do a change order with our contractor or in this case, our consultant. Uh, and that's where Danny was talking about. It is in here, but it's not to the detail that we were working with them. Because evaluating one of these wells could be as simple as looking at the, either the loss in pumping capacity. Or the increased electricity needs or antridge on these wells. That was really what they were designed to do on all of these and why it was only seventy thousand dollars. Yet when we had a well go down and then we had to then video log it and then we looked at it and it got a little bit more detailed. Why a good portion of that effort was still included. There were other things that got added to that. And that's really why we're here today is because we added some additional things that were really within. And one of the things that Danny mentioned about, but in detail, we did go out with an RF, a request for proposal, request for qualifications. And we selected them from that perspective because we knew for the first time. That if, that you recall back in nineteen was really the tail end or year five of the five-year rate increase. Up until then, we were running everything to failure. So we never actually had an opportunity to look at these. Because we knew at some point these wells were going to start failing. And just as Danny mentioned, they started failing right about the time they came on. So we do document those things and we do show it. Uh, but I agree with you wholeheartedly. We need to make sure that we make that very clear. And we do with our consultants, but we may not bring it to the board in that level of transparency that I think you may be expecting and we'll just do a better job moving forward.
Well, and, and it's not just for me, right? We want to make sure that we're able to have staff clearly able to see the scope of each contract. And so if we have scopes that go in various different directions, maybe we should have varying contracts. That's all I'm saying. To have multiple contracts won't really cost that much more. It just separates the costs and separates the duties and the scopes. That's all I'm trying to say.
I, I do agree with that. And I will say something that likely may get me in trouble, but I, there are items sometimes that um. Sometimes I do ask for per, uh, forgiveness after, before asking for permission, just due to the fact that I have to get something up and running so that we can have water for our customers. And that sounds like a pretty scapegoat comment, but yes, I agree with your, when circumstances allow, I have, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, it just, there's a, a large trickle down that, that maybe people don't realize that when they react in that way. Maybe they aren't realizing that, and I'll defer to our attorneys, but in, in litigation, if worst case scenario happens in any of our contracts. The muddier the contract, the harder it is to defend. And so we want to make sure that we're making their job easier so it doesn't cost us more money and we're making our job easier. So we're easier to, to follow our contractors. So thank you for letting me on my soapbox. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President?
Well. Uh, well, part of the prioritization also look into from six levels since we have talked about it. Maybe in order to address that shutdown, certain wells during certain times. And should we, as a priority, focus on those that have traditionally lower levels?
So on the list that's on the, on the screen. So on the list that's on the on the screen, there are two wells not shown. Well, twenty eight and well thirty. They are offline and they're offline and to the point where we've suspended, I guess is the best way to say to permit. And the only reason we did that is so that we don't have to constantly pour on it month after month. So this allows us. So yes, there are some of the things that we are asking to analyze. And with part of the other work that Corona Environmental is also assisting us with. Uh, hopefully we can determine. Um, for example, if somebody says you should run that well to failure because of the E M D S study says that maybe parts of the wealth thickness casing is too thin. And I'll just stop it there on the technical stuff. We may not want to prioritize rehab. We may want to run it to failure. Figure out what an alternative is and maybe focus those efforts on one of the wells and bring them back one of the others as well. So uh, some of that is not determined yet. As we have not really had the opportunity to get fully involved in this process and do the data acquisition and analysis. So I can, as this process moves forward, bring back reports back and put in the general management report, let you know where we are.
But when we, when these wells are out of service and we are having the ability to look at specific zones, we are taking samples, we are doing pump tests in each zone to see what the Chrome six levels are. Um, have we had a chance to wrap our hands around what zones those are yet and compare them? We've got some of the data, not all the data, because we haven't done all the wells yet, but we're continuing to look at that through, um, uh, Corona engineering. So this is, this is, this wasn't necessarily intended to do that, but since we've had these wells out of service, we've taken that opportunity to do so.
Okay, thank you.
And I just add the reason is because the outcome of this is the actual rehab, the physical work. So when they actually do the focus intake pumping, they can do spinner tests. And that would come up with the other determinations of yes, we probably should either blank off an area or but that would be the result of of that type of test, but that doesn't happen until you physically do the rehab.
And I have no further questions, but I really like the work that we're doing to be just more proactive than reactive like we were in the past and having the ability to see things coming and know how to better budget for them. I think we're doing a great job, so.
Especially with the new administration going forward that run the failure or just delay of maintenance hasn't been hasn't been a good process for the district.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve, contract amendment number one with Legend Pump and Well Service Incorporated and capital budget project budget augmentation for well thirty four rehabilitation. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to execute contract amendment number one with Legend Pump and Well Service Incorporated for well thirty four in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from six hundred and twenty two thousand, two hundred and twenty eight to six hundred and fifty two thousand, two hundred and twenty eight and twenty cents. Um, augment the capital improvement budget for job number one, one, seven, four, two in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from six hundred and ninety four thousand to seven hundred and forty four thousand dollars and do all things necessary to complete the project. General Manager?
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Uh, and I think this probably speaks better than any project we've brought in front of you. As far as looking at one component on a well site and realizing that there are other issues that we may have wanted to include, and I think this change order touches on each one of those. So with that being said, I'll let Eric talk about the project or our engineering manager and then how we could do a better job moving forward. So with that, Eric, go ahead.
Thank you, General Manager Macy. Good afternoon, President Sewell and members of the board. Uh, item twelve of this afternoon's agenda pertains to executing a contract amendment with Legend Pump and Well Service and a capital project budget augmentation for the well thirty four rehabilitation. Uh, the original the original project scope, the project was scoped to rehabilitate well thirty four. And to date, a majority of that work has been completed. Also onsite are boosters one and two. And while the contractor was on site, uh, M S W D asked them to look at them and it was found that both boosters were not operational. And they were subsequently pulled and inspected to identify the repairs that would be needed. After pulling the booster pumps, it was noted that the repairs needed. Um, there were repairs that were needed. And the dollar amount exceeds the available contingency. Since they were installed, the booster pumps have not been in operation for some time. And the boosters were removed and inspected and it was noted that there was heavy corrosion on the pump components and the column pipe. Well, thirty four is part of a larger improvement program and will ultimately be interconnected with the well to the south, which is well thirty five in the near future. Staff is currently working on the next phase of improvements to interconnect these two wells as they will improve water distribution system for the district. Now this repair work is necessary to provide a turnkey well site and will ultimately be ready to inter- interconnect with well thirty five. The staff report identifies thirty thousand dollars for an additional for additional costs to rehabilitate the boosters as well as twenty thousand dollars to allow staff to perform cleaning and supercorinating the onsite reservoir. And so, um, photo on the left shows uh, what was going on at the time. They were doing some test pumping for well thirty four and that discharge water was being directed to a nearby retention basin. As well as the photo on the right just shows, um, staff checking the water level at well thirty four. For that site. So, um, are there any questions?
Director Martin?
Nope.
Director Mya?
Yes. Um. When that, when this work is completed, when will we need to put more money into this well? So this is going to be like a completely rebuilt well, it's going to last us three or four more years. What's the longest equipment doesn't break? It'll last us three more, three or four more years or five years. And when will we have to put more money back into this?
Typically, when you're looking at a motor or pump or anything like that, you're looking at anywhere from five to ten to twenty years, depending on the situation operates under. Uh, the well itself, I know we've had, we have a hand dug well, is it twenty five or twenty five A that's been there for how long? Is it back in? Yeah, so we, so when you ask when we will have to go back, we'll look at the well again. It it depends on the corrosivity of the of the of the water that is there. Um, and the way it was built, hand dug wells in this particular case have lasted over a hundred years. Uh, we have some other wells, uh, up in this location, twenty eight and thirty that have been only in service since nineteen ninety four and they've been taken out of service for the last several years. So it varies from entity to entity and then how they're ran. As you were talking about earlier, the well that was a thousand feet deep and these are closer to twelve hundred feet deep. To pull that column of water out, longer distance and then go into the system. In these particular cases, that's we're talking about the reservoir that's in between, so it doesn't go into the system. But still, you're pulling a lot of water out at a long distance. So the smaller the well, the more the less capacity, they may last a little bit longer. But to give you a definitive, when is it going to be? When are we going to have to look at it again? My answer would be every ten to twenty years, we would want to rehab these wells, at least pull the pump out and send a camera down. Um, some of these you can do without that, but some of them you do have to pull out all the equipment and go all the way down. And that sort of goes into that prioritization. Which, when's the last time we did send a camera down? What is the corrosivity of the water? And how is the casing reacting? And that's where Kyle groundwater can look at the amperage uses and the whether the pumps are falling. The curve starts being diminished a little bit because there is more buildup in the in the well itself. So in reality, that prioritization will tell us the, will be able to answer your question better than what we've seen just on the surface by looking at the pump curve and the electric usage and consumption.
Great answer. Thank you. Um. So when this is all done, or whatever well we're trying to rehab, we'll have an idea of how long we should, which makes it easy for them.
Yeah. So in this particular case, the change orders that you see in front of you for booster pumps one and two, uh, the motors themselves only had to be reworked or replaced. We decided to replace those to make sure that we had, and the cost difference was the fact that we just wanted to replace those. But we did have to replace the bowls because of the corrosivity. Now, moving forward, because we've replaced them, they should last, you know, they were there for I believe almost twenty years this time. They should be twenty years next time, but when we bring in thirty five, they're going to see a little bit more activity. So that twenty year period that we got before may not be as quite as long. So those are the type of things we look at. Also looking at the number of hours they run and all the different things that we're doing. We've talked about a little bit about Chrome six. This particular well site doesn't have that much Chrome six. If I'm not mistaken, it's around what four? One point four parts per billion. So when we start talking about looking at wells, this one's one we're going to run a lot because we know that we don't have a Chrome six problem coming from it. And and likewise, thirty five, we expect to have the same thing. And then that goes into the twenty eight and thirty that's just north of these. It also should be similar water quality from a from an issue. Now, there may be other constituents that we have to concern ourselves with, but from a Chrome six perspective, this is a prime location for that activity.
That's, that's great. So just for clarification, the pump is at the bottom thousand feet down, correct?
Correct.
While we're looking here at this picture, that's the motor.
Exactly.
Brings the water up.
Yep. I'd love to test Danny to see what stage pumps these are, you know, off the top, is it a fourth? Okay. Which means there's thirteen bowls that it keeps bringing up the elevation to get it all that hot.
Thirteen, not thirteen pumps, but.
What?
It's Mr. Friend?
He loves this stuff. I don't want to deny him the opportunity to.
I guess on the item, theoretical lift is a calculation, but it is a thousand foot deep well. It's not set at a thousand feet. This one's roughly set at just over seven hundred and fifty. But the bowls that was referenced by General Manager Macy are the mechanical method to actually get that water, that column of water up and assist that. So it's a series of stages of bowls. So it's like a pump with an inlet and it has a volute and an impeller and the bowls themselves are what gets that water up to that eight hundred feet to the surface and pumps it to well, in this case onsite to an onsite suction reservoir, but in most cases to overcome that total dynamic head to its endpoint at the reservoir. So yes.
So when you say bowls, you have the pump and then it brings it up to a certain level. And then that pressure from the pump brings it up and continues to go up.
True. And and then why General Manager Macy asks the series of bowls, the more bowls you have combined with the size and diameter, the elevation is how how far that can go. So yes, that's an assembly. We refer to as bowls, but that's all entirely the pump. So the shaft that that motor moves goes all the way down and moves that pump and sucks that water up and moves that column of water up and takes it into that horizontal piping and into the system.
And this guy stands are waiting for.
I believe that's what they're waiting for. No, they're 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 doing other.
Unless he's not watching page, right? We all like.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Director, Director Duff, you had the chance to ask the question? Okay. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Weck, I just want to clarify something. Uh, it's, oops. It's a thirty thousand dollar amendment to that's going to Legend. But an additional twenty thousand is going to be in staff time and cost, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. I just wanted to verify because whenever we are changing the capital budget and that number is different from the contract amendment, it always begs to verify whether it was a typo or not. So thank you very much for clarifying. I appreciate it.
Vice President?
So according to this, this is contract amendment one. And the copy of the contract, page three sixty eight states that the work is five sixty five, six sixty two. So I'm not sure how we're getting five, six, five, six, six, two, and then saying we're going from six twenty two, two twenty eight to six fifty two, two twenty eight.
I believe there's a contract, a ten percent contract contingency. So the original contract, the original bid from the contractor, which is Legend, submitted a bid in the amount of five hundred and sixty five thousand, six hundred and sixty two dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Uh, the other thing is because in the contract, it doesn't mention that. Um. The contract time, so it says that this should be done by August ninth.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Um, all of their insurance documents expire in September of twenty twenty four. So if this does for some reason get delayed, can we make sure that those are updated?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And I have nothing further. Thank you, Eric. Item thirteen, California Special District Association Board of Directors, seat A, term two thousand twenty five dash two thousand twenty seven, Southern Network. It is recommended that the board review, consider and select one of the three candidates nominated for seat A, Southern Network, and direct the general manager to vote for the candidate of their choice. General Manager.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Typically, I believe the way the board has looked at these types of elections is you review the documents over the next couple of days and then on Monday, you either provide the the president, your your thoughts and then the discussion and then, uh, if consensus can be made, that it will be made on Monday and that's when I'll get my direction to make that vote. So at this point, uh, we could discuss each candidate, but I think typically it's more of a homework assignment, if you will, for the board. So how, whatever the board chooses, we will, we will support that.
I'm fine discussing on Monday. If anyone has anything to discuss today?
Yeah.
I, I, I read all the one.
And there's a, a third one, I believe, as well. Okay. All right. We'll move on to item fourteen, contract agreement with T K E Engineering Incorporated for on-call professional general engineering services. It is recommended to authorize the general manager to execute a contract agreement with T K E Engineering Incorporated for on-call professional general engineering services in the amount of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. I'll ask, um, Eric, our engineering manager to provide a short presentation. But also here in the audience will be, uh, Mike Thornton and Terry from T K E to answer any specific questions about their organization. Uh, Eric, with the presentation?
Yes, sir. Uh, good afternoon, um, President Sewell, members of the board. Item fourteen of this, uh, afternoon's agenda item pertains to executing a contract agreement with T K E Engineering for professional general engineering services. Now, T K E Engineering provides experienced engineers to supplement M S W D staff on an as-needed basis to development, to develop project plans, perform inspections on capital improvements as well as privately funded development projects and also plays a very important role in completing needed um, water resource activities under their general engineering services, which includes representing the district at the Coachella Valley Water Management Group, managing the salt nutrient management plan and managing the groundwater quality management plan for the district. As well as inspecting privately developed uh, privately funded development projects such as the Viento project, the Rancho Descanso project, and now the Pods Storage Project off of Nineteenth Avenue. T K E has many projects uh, that they are actively managing for M S W D under their on-call general engineering contract as called out for under specific task orders, which you see here. Please notice that from the table shown, over time, as projects get completed and as they're worked on and as a majority of the items are are done and submitted to the district and executed, uh, you'll see, um, that over time the costs will go down. So let's take a look at the budget. So for these, uh, fifteen, sixteen, uh, task, task orders, originally all totaled, it was four hundred and nine thousand dollars. And then as time goes by, you'll see the remaining balance, uh, looks like at the end of uh, December twenty twenty three, the ending balance was two hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. And, uh, now we're, uh, the remaining work, it looks like they need or the remaining work that remains is a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. So over time, as, uh, T K E gets their, uh, helps us out and gets these projects completed, the costs, uh, go down for the for these items and, uh, which allows ultimately for more capacity for them to be used even more. Um, likewise, T K E is also working on specific contracts outside of their on-call um, task orders, which includes uh, the C M and inspection of the Nancy Wright Regional Reclamation Facility. Preparation of the, uh, nineteenth, twentieth and Little Morongo roadway construction project. Uh, they're developing the project plans and contract documents as well as the, uh, well forty two project for C M and inspection. Secondly, T K E has also shown to be competitive in terms of their hourly rate. Now, just recently, when M S W D Now, just recently, when M S W D requested a scope and fee for the Pods Storage Water Inspection Services Task Order, that is a developer-funded project. M S W D reached out to our uh, to our pre-qualified consultants. And out of the three solicited quotes, their hourly rates were found to be a hundred and seventy five dollars from M W H, a hundred and ninety dollars from Provost and Pritchard, and T K E inspection uh, costs uh, was a hundred and thirty dollars per hour. And there will, there will also be some efficiencies and some potential cost savings in that the recently um, submitted quote for the Pods Storage Waterline Inspection Project along nineteenth is actually across the street from the Viento project. And uh, the same inspector will be available to visit both sites as necessary, which might uh, the district and ultimately the developer might realize some cost savings because T K E is also doing, performing the Viento Waterline Sewer Inspection Contract, um, inspection for the Viento um, development project. And both of those, the Viento and the Pods are both developer-funded, which means the developer will be ultimately paying and reimbursing the district for these costs. Um, also, please uh, know that staff will return back on Monday with a revised contract. I I think the contract that is in the uh, agenda package shows uh, not to exceed fee for three hundred and fifty. But with these uh, new additions, um, we 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 will need to revise the contract at four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to accommodate the two additional task orders, the ones that I just spoke about, Viento and Pod Storage. Totalling, now those two total two hundred and forty thousand dollars, which will be, which will bring the requested contract amount from three hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, let's see. I think that is it for this PowerPoint slides. Um, now, General Manager Macy, I know you and I talked uh, a lot about this item. And there was a lot of information being thrown around. Sir, did I capture all of those things that we wanted to, that uh, I wanted to bring up or I, did I miss anything?
No, you touched on all the existing contracts and all those items. Uh, just, I know T K E supersedes a lot of us here. The only one that probably doesn't is probably Danny. But Mike Thornton has been here and been helping us with the water resources for, I don't even, twenty odd years? Twenty plus? So there's a lot, there's a lot of re, there's a lot of historical knowledge that he has as well as passing on to Steve Ledbetter. That's where you see most of that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars going toward is that type of of water resources activities related to each of the three basins, uh, as as well as um, the uh, the regional water management groups that we attend, uh, some of the uh, the the drought contingency plans that we put together and also all the uh, groundwater quality um, protection programs. So there's a lot of historical things there and I think is what is interesting is there was a lot of design that has happened over the last ten years that we didn't have the money to design and we knew we needed, but we didn't actually be able to construct. And now some of those projects are gonna co, are going to construction and you'll see the migration from engineering to construction. Also, one of the things that when we were looking at some of these numbers, uh, going down and seeing the water resources becoming most prevalent, we have a lot more development going on than we have in the last fifteen years. And I think that's where uh, when you're looking at some of the inspection activities, uh, why you're seeing at least in the last two, how competitive uh, T K E's rates are and why they have won the, there's two parts of it that Derek talked about. In your packet today is a hundred and seventy five. That's specifically for the Viento project. What we would, what we would like to bring back uh, on on Monday would be the additional Pods project. When we went to, when we actually were putting this together, that was going through the review process and the solicitation of our three on-call services. TK subsequently won that, so we'll be adding that. So the next time you see this uh, this item, it will be four fifteen. So from that perspective, the one big thing that you see, especially on this slide right here, the construction administration for the original plant is coming off and that's another three million. I don't want to get into the specifics of how the uh, T K E is ran and how these projects will be completed. But with that being said, I would like to invite Terry and Mike to come up and 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 address the the board and take any questions.
Good afternoon. So I'm gonna be very brief. Um, I just wanted to say two things because the last time I was here, I was here a couple of months ago. Couple of things you said that I took back with me and I so I want to do is kind of address those. Um, resources, um, Vice President Griffith said to me during a break, you know, we're concerned how the depth of your firm. And so I do want to address that. We have the resources to meet the projects that are presented to you in the Stafford for today. Um, we have performed historically for the district. I think we've just asked you to review our track record and we are committed. Um, you're a very important client to us and we will remain that way. So and I give you my word as the president of the firm that that will continue. Uh, secondly, insurance. Uh, one of the concerns about insurance that was mentioned was, hey, with a lot of different things going on, how does your insurance work? And I just wanted to to touch on the contract that we have with the district says that a million dollars per occurrence is required with a two million dollar total. We actually carry greater insurance than that, not because you're asking, you're not asking, but because others ask. So we have to carry that insurance for other contracts. But we do have insurance that we carry and it's shown in our certificate of insurance that we share with the district that we have a two million dollar policy per occurrence with a maximum of four million dollars. Um, I do want to say we have never used our insurance. We've been in business twenty five years. We have not used our insurance one time. We just pay them. They don't do anything for us, other than give us our certificate of insurance. And we intend to keep it that way. So when there are issues that do arise, we sit down and work them out. We don't turn anybody over to insurance and try to resolve issues. We work them out personally. Um, so just wanted to touch on those two items and to explain our success. Obviously, you are important to us, Terry and I. Terry's the senior vice president, or the president of the firm, showing that Mr. Springs is important to us. Steve would be here also, but he is on a well-deserved vacation. And so I I hope he's enjoying himself. With that, I'm gonna say thank you and Terry and I are both here to assist in answering any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Director Martin, any questions?
No, not at this time.
Director Meyer.
There's general, no, but General Manager Macy. The pod storage, even though it's, they're not hooking up to us, are they? My impression that they were gonna use Coachella's. Did I say something funny, Director Duff? That was good. Never mind. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Any questions, Director Duff?
I don't have any questions. I just want to reiterate what I had said previously regarding the contracts. Uh, the four fifteen amount adding the pods contract. It's concerning me already with the one seventy five. I personally, in my personal opinion, feel that we should have a separate contract for the one seventy five and a separate contract for the sixty five. I'm concerned that an on-call contract that then has specifics that we already are aware of should potentially be separated. That's just my opinion and and there may be reasons to keep it as part of the on-call. Um, but if we already know that those are particularly funded by a developer and are or have their own scope already, to me, it made sense, it would make sense that it would not be part of our on-call, that it would be a separate.
We can, we can do that.
That's only.
We, that is not a problem whatsoever. We can break this into, in this particular case, three contracts. We would have an on-call services and then we would have separate contracts for the other two based on developers. And actually, it probably makes it easier for Arturo to bookkeep when they're separate projects, separate contracts and things like that. Uh, it versus having to go through a specific task order in one contract. It's just one contract. Um, we will do everything we can to see if we can't break these apart. I know that um, our staff that would work on the contracts themselves as well as posting this will be here tomorrow. So we'll see if we can't, we can't do that. Well, um, we, we will probably bring you one staff report, but there'll be three contracts in it. That's okay. And that way, we'll be separate contracts. Is, I'm speaking almost for T K E at this point, if we're breaking apart contracts. But if that's okay with them, then that's exactly the way we'll move it forward.
Thank you. Um, and then lastly, can you guys at T K E please update your reference list in section five of your submittal? We have a new general manager and his information should probably be listed there.
So, so this this on, this on-call service was done several years ago, obviously, and we know that the board likes to see what was submitted then. Um, but if if we want to update those things, we can and where we can just, what we'll probably do is leave them as is because that's a historical document. But what we'll do is we'll ask for maybe an updated.
Well, and I would ask that if they send those references to other contracts, that they make sure that our new general manager is.
I'm sure they're there.
Thank you.
Vice President.
I just have a question. So I noticed the budget for the S N M P, Project Seventy Eight, it has increased and then it says a three T M's expected in this fiscal year. I know our reporting requirements are getting um, a little more cumbersome and burdensome. So is that uh, the reason we expect the budget to be higher this year?
Yes, so the salt nutrient management plan has been going on for, gosh, I think it was two thousand sixteen when the first one was given to the regional board and they rejected it. And we've now where we are with a bigger group that's moving that forward. And that's exactly what it is. There are, there has been technical memos, one and two. Now we're looking at three, four and five with a, I believe, a twenty twenty six completion date. So, yes, you'll see that go up as we get closer to that finalized date because talking about recycled water, talking about recharge, the salt nutrient management plan is a crucial part that links all of that together. So you'll, we will be focusing on that in the coming years.
I figured it is no secret that California is um, rampant with reporting.
And I just had one clarification, I'm pretty sure, but the Viento cost was already in that three fifty.
It, it was. The pods is something that we added earlier that or that we actually opened, if you will, or solicited. The bids were due on Monday, so it didn't make this publication. But we, again, we were hoping to add that, so we didn't have to bring another item back to the board. Um, but from an interesting perspective, if we are going to bring three contracts, we could bring that third contract by itself at a later date. But we are set up to bring all three and the four fifteen on Monday. So it's, I see a lot of nodding, so that's what we'll do. So the three contracts will come to you.
Yeah, Monday sounds great and I like the idea of splitting it. I think um, it makes it easier to digest kind of bit by bit instead of lumping all together. And uh, thank you, Mike and Terry for coming in. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you. Anything further? All right. Discussion items. Item fifteen, Nancy Wright Regional Water Reclamation Facility update. In person.
Thank you, General Manager Macy, um, President Sewell, members of the board. I am here in person this time uh, to give you the update. Not much to do as far as update uh, on the the presentation. Um, the contractor has finished the work as much work as they can finish. The only work that is not completed out there is landscaping. Um, the landscaping will be watered with recycled water, so we need to get the treatment plant running before we can do that. So um, they have completely demobilized from the site and the the slides that we last showed you from the last meeting are essentially the same. So um, today I'm here just to give you an update on the funding side of things. For uh, the phase one uh, treatment plant side, our reimbursement request for uh, Q four twenty twenty three is still in with the state. We're just awaiting final approval and payment uh, release on that one. Uh, for the twenty twenty four Q one, um, we are finalizing a couple of minor uh, elements with uh, district staff right now. And that will go in in the next week or two here is what we're expecting. Um, we're very close. We're just um, finalizing a a couple of minor documents and that'll be submitted. Uh, for the W R D, um, well, number three, we have the uh, we've already submitted our twenty twenty four Q two report. Um, that was due uh, prior to July first, so that was submitted on time. And um, we've also received a permit for uh, the drilling of that well number three. And so we are currently working with the contractor to get us a a change order uh, to drill that uh, well number three, and then we'll be bringing that to the board upon receipt of that change order. Um, for the private sampling wells, the agreement was completed uh, prior to our last meeting. I think we had um, already talked about that. And um, the final work plan has now also been submitted to the Regional Water Quality Control Board as of last month. So we're just awaiting for them to uh, give us that final approval so that we can move forward. Um, in regards to the conveyance line for phase two, our um, F B A is still um, awaiting final approval. The um, state had reached out to us. I think it was back in late April or early May. We had given them comments back in May. We're still in that waiting process for them to give us the uh, the final approval on that. Um, and then on uh, phase three, which is the area M two sewer, we have um, finalized those documents. I think we had, might have talked about this at the last meeting. Um, but that has also been submitted for um, final approval so that we can then go to bids. Um, and then Director Duff, at our last meeting, you had mentioned um, some of the concerns about the air quality out there. Um, at the time, the contractor had just kind of vaguely mentioned it in in passing, you know, that there was an issue and what it really wasn't a a large problem to them. Since then, there has been some additional uh, comments made and concerns raised by the contractor of the the dirt coming onto the site. We have reached out to um, the city for uh, their public works inspector to see if they can try and ramp up the uh, inspection requirements and the mitigation of that dust. Uh, we did talk to him again today. He said that as of earlier this week, they had brought additional water trucks onto the site. And so he thinks they are doing a better job. We asked him if he could just, you know, reiterate that to the contractor and make sure that they're trying to mitigate the dust as much as possible. With that, I'll open it for any questions.
Uh, Director Duff?
Thank you for that update and thank you for following up with the contractor. I actually reported to staff here that on Monday, that on Sunday, when I was driving on the ten, the brownout that we were experiencing in the east uh, southern part of Desert Hot Springs and on the ten was all from that site. They had one pipe of water that covered less than twenty percent of the entire construction site. And the the, it was completely browned out. I could not see our building. Um, so I think that aside from during the workdays, that they have those trucks, that single pipe of water at one corner of their facility is not nearly enough for when they are not there.
Right.
To see what's going on. But I appreciate you continuing to follow up on that and um, I appreciate your update today. Thank you.
No problem.
Vice President. Director Martin? Director Meyer.
Your landscaping, you're gonna create a heat island or?
Just the landscaping for plan. I'm um, no, no landscape there yet. So we gotta, if we were to put landscaping in, the district staff would have to handwater it or or go out there and water it manually. So um, we can't install the landscaping until we get the treatment plant water because it will be, um, it will be watered with the recycled water.
I, I, excuse me. I understand that, but is there gonna be rocks, stuff in the landscaping or organic matter?
For plan, I I'm I'm not sure.
Yeah, the plan has uh, Vince aggregate.
Has what?
It it has aggregate. It does not have organic material.
And aggregate does not have chromium six in it? Small traces of?
That I do not know.
And then when it rains, isn't it going to our groundwater adventure?
I don't know that there's any text, testing requirements for gravel when we bring it onto the site for landscaping purposes.
Well.
But we can look into that.
We know that uh, when we are decomposed uh, granite comes out of the ground, same place where the uh, concrete net comes out. And then that concrete has chromium six in it.
I don't know, I don't know what uh, gravel pit. I don't know, I don't know what gravel pit they're taking this granite from. So depending on where it comes from, it may or may not. I don't know.
Anywhere in California? That's chromium six.
Typically along a fault line, yes, but there are some, several areas that are away from fault lines who do not have that.
I'm just opposed to throw it out there. It's not necessary. There's some plants in there, some organic matter, pull the sun off of the the groundwater there, off the water for the plants, how healthy your plants are, just gonna raise the temperature up for your plants and use more water. As simple as that.
I believe we brought to the board several opportunities to modify those drawings. And the last comment I believe we received, or at least direction from the board, was simply work with the existing landscape architect to make sure that the plants were drought tolerant or native species to this area. And that's the way we proceeded.
But you just said it was for the plants. I'm talking about what's going on the ground. I don't ever remember. I, I, I believe I've always been against uh, heat islands. California Special District is against them. I know another director here has brought that up. So we, we need to set the example of what it should be to conserve water, make your health, your plants healthier. Or the water district, we're the ones that are.
I, I believe the landscape architect made it quite clear that he believes that the dent aggregate is the, is the proper method. And that's why he stamped those drawings. I'm not a landscape architect, so I, I go with.
Why, but I know what, but that's besides the point, you know. It's a heat island. You put decomposed granite there, rocks there, you create a heat island. It's just as simple as that. The landscape architect doesn't understand that, then it's a different problem.
Um, just a question I had regarding the dust and maybe not just from that adjacent property, but even all the dust we experienced from the, the silt and everything from Hurricane Hillary. Does that damage the tanks in any way if we get a lot of that accumulating in, inside the plant?
No, so the, obviously with where the plant was going to be constructed, they did take into account, you know, mechanisms to prevent damage from wind blown sand. The contractor has raised concerns with how much dust is coming onto the site currently with how close it is there. That there's extra cleanup methods and, and other things that could potentially cost more for them to, you know, fix later, but nothing in regards to damage of the equipment.
Okay. Well, thank you. We'll move on to item sixteen, Critical Services Center and Administration Building Update.
We will do that presentation on Monday.
Right. Item seventeen, front lobby discussion.
I guess thank President Sewell. I will ask our Director of Finance, Arturo Seha, to give a presentation regarding the front lobby.
Arturo? Uh, thank you, General Manager Macy, President Sewell, and members of the board. Uh, it is my pleasure to bring this item and have a, a discussion about the front lobby. During the strategic plan, it was requested that we do a lot of trainings and several new changes with customer service. We're finding that to be somewhat difficult when we have customers in front of the lobby and we have to pull the staff to do trainings. It's just not possible. We are now going through a lot of things that the district's facing, Chrome Six, P files, a lot of changes that we need to educate our customers with. And it's just not feasible for us to set them all down, follow up and make sure that they're well trained to continue to help the district. With that said, we did do some research as to what's happening in the lobby. On a normal Friday, we'll see ten people at the most up there, and that's throughout the day. That still means that we have to have one person sitting at the lobby and only concentrating on whoever's walking in and out. Whereas if we were closing the lobby, and mind you, this is not closing the district. This is closing the lobby for customers when during COVID, that's basically the situation we had. We would still be available to customers through phone. We're still gonna be answering phones and appointments, just like we were back then. And in fact, it makes it a lot easier for our customer service staff to handle a situation with a customer that makes an appointment on a Friday because they need more help. When, because of our nine eighty schedule, we will have two people up there at any given time. You have someone calling out and it's already a, a mess. It is difficult for me to see other departments approving a fight it out for their staff. And I unfortunately have to tell my staff that they can't because there's no coverage. Even though we do have cross trainings, it is very difficult for me to say, you know, we need, we need you here because there's no one else who can do the work that you can as efficiently and so forth. The, again, the service will not be impacted to our customers. We do not shut off anyone on Friday. Therefore, no one would be off with water throughout the weekend. And again, we're here on, by phone. And before we do that, obviously, we wanted to have this discussion to be able to tell our customers ahead of time before we implement this. Because we're also, as you remember, last month, G M, Assistant General Manager Champion brought to you the item of the the survey that we did with customers about our bill. And we're doing, we are making a couple of changes that we want to implement altogether so that we don't have to go one, you know, time, two times with some of these changes. If implemented, obviously, we would have to do some training with our staff about what's changing. One of the things we have asked customers what they would prefer for us to be doing. A lot of them are actually upset that we close at four thirty on a Friday because when they get out of work, we're already gone. Throughout the week, they, that's when they come in, first thing in the morning. In fact, sometimes we'll see customers up to thirty between seven thirty and eight thirty in the morning. Compared to the ten that we see on a Friday. Their comment to us has been, we would rather you be here a little bit earlier or a little bit later. And, and not that I'm pushing for anything other than schedule, other than just showing you what the demand is for customer service staff throughout the week versus on a Friday. This will allow us to do trainings with our staff, pull everyone at the same time, go over all the information and continue to bring that to them. And show them, you know, the importance of keeping up with that, as well as other type of trainings, not just what's going on with the district. Be able, able to catch up on projects. A lot of times, projects in the front office keep piling up primarily because again, whenever there is someone up there, they need to be there the entire time and it's difficult for them to catch up with paperwork and just a general admin day that everyone else gets to enjoy because our office is not front facing to the customers. And again, for me, what it comes down to is to be able to allow my staff to take a fight out without impacting the district as much when everyone else in another department is able to do the same thing. And if I can answer any questions.
Uh, before we go to questions, just one thing that I wanted to talk about, I know it, it's hard to talk about changing staffing and talking about the issues that we have on a staffing perspective, but what I really want to focus on is the customer experience. And customer service is unique in that they are the ones that are talking and being seen by the customers on Friday. Everyone else half staff, that's okay. They are not seen, they're not heard. And I think when you're trying to build a rapport with your customer and you set the standard on Monday through Thursday and you know you can't get it on Friday because we have split schedule, I think that's really what we're trying to get. We're trying to get more of a consistent customer experience. And while it does help a lot of different things that we do in our process, that it allows us to establish that bar on those four days without any concerns or any questions. And then the people that do come in still get that level of service because they've made an appointment and we have somebody dedicated to them. So that was one thing that we, Arturo and I were talking about. He touched on some of those key points, but I, I just want to make sure that it's the customer experience that we're focused on. And yes, it helps the staff better, but I think the customer experience is what we'd like to focus on. So just food for thought. Sorry.
Questions, Director Martin?
Yeah. So you want to be able to give staff off on Friday and you say that the people that normally come in can have their problems addressed via telephone. Okay? Who's answering the phone on Friday if the staff is gone? I mean, who's gonna answer their questions on Friday?
We have two staff usually on, at the lobby. Therefore, we would always keep it one in person. And when you were talking about a phone call, even when, even with only two people out there, it does trickle down those calls to everyone else at the district. So we do have the backup people that get those calls. If that person's not able to answer, I also get some of those calls based on the routing. So everyone else is also taking those calls, not just the customer service.
So what would be the reason for not having that person who is responsible for when they receive the phone calls? Having their exchange with a person in person at the, at the counter.
Unfortunately, we're talking about hourly employees and it's quite difficult to work on a nine eighty schedule when it was a Friday off or not to plan ahead, because then you're talking about overtime, California labor law. It, it just gets very complicated when you're talking about an hourly.
You don't have that problem if they're just answering the phone.
Correct.
Director Myhaff?
I think this is a great idea for the staff. But for our customers, I think it's a bad idea. People get paid on Friday. People want to be able to walk through the door, say, here's my cash. I got my, got in my piggy bank, my bill was a little high. They, they want that because they're face to face customer service. The other thing is if you close that lobby on Friday, what are they, what are they gonna think? They only work four days a week. And you close on Friday, everybody else is working, that's paying the bills, working five days a week. So in order for the customer servicing of it, for our, our customer, I think it's a bad idea for the district. It may be a good idea. But if we're looking at customer service, you need to keep the building open.
And again, part of the plan is to educate and provide the customers with the information, letting them know where you are here. And also available to, for appointments and to answer emergencies and phone calls, that will always be available.
So they will have face to face contact the rest of the week, just not on Fridays?
They will on Fridays as well through an appointment. We have an appointment system.
Absent there, absent there. Some people have a walk in.
Correct.
Tuesday.
Correct.
They're gonna be able to.
Yes.
One of them, okay.
Yep.
And how are we gonna notify our customers that this is happening?
Uh, we are redesigning the bill right now, so we also wanted to take advantage of this is approved to include that in there. We're gonna do Facebook posts and throughout on our website. So it, it's gonna be a, a matter of probably a month before we implement this until everyone's aware of it. We train customer service staff to be ready to, and also a, address any issues that come up if they, if it is approved and we have to change it back, you know, we'll keep an eye out for anything that's different or the customers are asking that we're not providing them.
Well, once you change it and then trying to change it back is gonna even create more problems. I, I I'm kind of opposed to, for the reasons I stated. Thank you.
Director Duff?
You mentioned that we don't ever disconnect on Fridays, but I'm assuming we do on Thursdays. So in those disconnect notices, we'll probably also need to put something on there to communicate if we were to move forward with that. The the concern I have is, is similar to, I think, what everyone is, is voicing. It's a, it's always the last resort to take away face to face time with your customers. I can see this as being, you know, an in-service Fridays where M S W D is having in-service days where we're here, but our staff are diligently working and, and will have appointments and take phone numbers. I guess how you word it will be important. But I, I would, if, if, if the board agrees, I personally would like to see this maybe come back in six months to see if we've received an increase in customer service dependability. And, and customer service isn't all just the face to face. It's getting from point A to point B and all the steps involved completed on a timely manner. The Ts crossed, the Is dotted, so that the billing is correct, so that they receive the right information. And I know that we have experienced some issues with some of those steps. So I see that it could potentially be an improvement to our customer service to allow that more quiet time. The only other comment I'm gonna make, which I've made before is that I don't particularly like hearing that we don't have enough staff. We don't have enough staff. Why are we not adding more positions? If, if we need to be able to have an equitable environment for all departments so that they can feel that they have the same benefits as the other non-public facing departments, then I, I think that it may be a bigger internal discussion about how we are actually providing F T's and P T's in the customer service department and how we are actually scheduling that. Are we allowing? I mean, do we only have four employees and two get off one Friday and two get off the other? Or do we have, you know, eight where six are going off on one Friday and two are off on the next? So those are little things that I, I, I'm not privy to, but I am concerned with if we're gonna do this. So I'd like to see if, if we do it, that in six months, we get some sort of a quantitative report that would show that there's improvement.
I will provide a, a written proposal next time. That way you can see exactly how it's, we're planning to make it a function.
Thank you.
Vice President.
You made the comment that the responses, one of the responses you got is that people wish we were here past four thirty on Friday. So you've gotten a response from the public on what they want and we're not even going to consider that. We're just gonna go by appointment only. Are we going by appointment after four thirty?
No, in, in general, what they meant is we, we prefer the early and late versus the coming in on a Friday. So if they had the preference, we would rather, if they would rather we be here six thirty or seven in the morning and, and six o'clock versus the having, you know, a couple of hours on a Friday here.
Have we considered part-time staff to supplement? Possibly having people stay here a little later and then on Friday you have an additional body?
We, we do have part-time staff, but we do not have for the extended hours you just made reference to.
Okay.
Can do that.
But I'm, I'm just saying, have we looked at that as an option? As opposed to let's just close down. I'm just, have we, have we taken a look at the whole picture of it's not just about, okay, so I can't give people off on Friday. Well, if you have that additional person or if you have an additional load on a certain time, are we bringing in a little extra staff for part-time? So that would be my concern. Overall, I don't have a big concern about it simply because I think if you institute a policy of Fridays by appointment only, phone calls, no matter what. But I think I, I just have concerns that if, if they're saying that we're not available enough, then not make, they're making us less available isn't really being responsive to them. I get it's an employee thing, but it's, again, it is, it is a customer service and given that we are working on improving our profile, so to speak, I have concerns about that.
And I'll just say I'm a little split on it. I think I'm leaning towards being able to close it on Friday. I know one of the negatives I hear quite often on the city is that they're closed on Fridays. And I know it would be different because there are still people in the building. And it's just kind of, like you said, educating our customers. Of those ten on average that come in on Friday, are most of them to pay the bill or is it bigger issues?
New service, the end of the month, and they want to start service because they're moving into a property. That's always what we see on a Friday.
Okay. And then regarding Director Myhaffan's comment of paying the bill, we have a lot of avenues to pay the bill. I know seven eleven, is that able to, can they pay with cash?
Absolutely. So we extended, in fact, Pay Near Me has extended the places where people can pay, including Walgreens, Walmart, now Dollar General. Or over the phone or through, get a link on your phone and you basically do that QR code. So that is the reason why we implemented it. A lot of, we used to get a lot of our customers who would say, I'm getting turned off, but I'm out of state and I don't have any way to pay my, my bill. Well, we implemented the seven eleven payment option. So now we said, go to seven eleven, they'll take your cash or credit card, however you want to pay, just, and we'll be alerted as soon as you make that payment and we will take you off the shot off list or reconnect you if that's the case. So even we're not, we're not here in those stores, some of them are open twenty-four hours. You can go take the back of your bill, scan it and make a payment.
Okay. And then I haven't been through the front door in quite some time, but maybe some signage, if it's not already there, that we could update to include those pay locations and things like that to alleviate if there are people coming in for that reason. Is this something that you want consensus from the board? I guess we'd think about it over the weekend and Monday we.
That's exactly what we were hoping for. We, we just wanted to get feedback. We wanted to have the discussion. We've done that. And I, I don't necessarily want to vote. And I, I don't necessarily necessarily want to vote, but I, Arturo, how would you like to see this come back on Monday? Just a general consensus or a head nod saying, give us more information. In reality, this is a, this is probably one of the most important decisions we make of when we're going to open and when we, how we want to serve our public. So I don't want to take this lightly. If we don't have a decision on Monday and we need additional, uh, additional information, we can do that too. I know that we would like to include it on a new bill, but if we don't because of the, some of the concerns we heard today, or we don't have enough information, then. We'll deal with that accordingly. So. If we can talk about it maybe a little bit more on Monday or simply just come back and say, we still need more time or need more information. We'll listen to that, to that comment as well. Okay.
We have one last. Comment if you don't mind. You know, anytime we make a decision particularly in dealing with the public. Uh, we don't really know for sure how the public's going to react. And, uh, I'm all for, for giving it a try for six months as, as, uh. As Director, uh, Dove said, and, and seeing how it plays out. See if people are happy with it or be upset. Let's, let's give it a try. What do we got to lose?
Any other discussion questions?
I'm opposed to it. I, I'm, out of all the people sitting in here, I'm, I'm actually out there. Um, in, in the stores and talking to different people. And. My experience here, what's so funny? What's so funny is you think that you're the only person that goes into stores and stuff. And talks to people. We all do that, so. Anyways, I'm talking to lower income people who are going to be happy with this.
Uh, we'll think about it over the weekend and discuss further on Monday. Thank you, Arturo. Consent agenda consists of item eighteen approval of minutes and item nineteen register of demands. Would anyone like to discuss either of those today?
Yeah, register demands.
So item nineteen register of demands, the register of demands totaling three million fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and nine cents. Uh, Vice President?
Yeah, page four, page four eighty-seven. Um, I see there's two entries for. Of course, I can't read now. Employees towards the bottom of the page, one is for, uh, thirty-five, twenty-four, the other is eighteen, ten. Um, just kind of curious what that is.
Thank you, uh, Director, uh, Griffith. Uh, actually, this is one item the Director Dove has been asking us to correct. And, and, uh, skipped us again this time. Those are the paper checks that employees are getting. Uh, so anytime you get a paper check, it's, uh, that's what it comes out as when it gets written out.
Okay.
We do have a new employee, which is why one's more than the other, that hadn't had the chance to do direct deposit. Um, where the other ones are just a standard that happened every month. And I'm working on correcting that description to say the employee paper checks.
Okay. I thought there was a party I wasn't invited to. Wouldn't be the first time.
Anything further registered, Director Deff?
Um, I just have a question on our Calpers. So am I understanding correctly that on average, our monthly Calper's contribution is seventy-one, five, give or take? What is our, do we have or what is our current unfunded Calpers? Do you know that?
Uh, it is, and it, it cha- the one time we do actually look at that is every year. Um, through the audit process, because that's when we get the actuarial valuation numbers that tells us the expected, uh, life expectancy of everyone. Uh, women live longer than men and any changes in investments, all of that gets taken into consideration once a year. However, uh, they, based on those numbers, they come up with a percentage, then they charge the district. That percentage based on payroll for classic employees is twenty percent, roughly it's nineteen point five four six. Uh, and for Peppera employees, which are the ones after, that were hired after twenty thirteen is, uh, eight point seven five percent. Um, and that's how they calculate. However, um, that number. Uh, gets extended by the unfunded amount that we owe towards that fund. Uh, we pay it upfront. In fact, you'll see it in the next, uh, uh, month's, uh, registered demands. Uh, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand and five, uh, five thousand, four hundred. Uh, to prepay that amount because it does save the district roughly, uh, fifty, sixty thousand. Um, but right now our funded liability is three point five million, based on last year's investment changes. Expect that to be higher based on the losses that we have experienced over the last year.
Okay, but we're, we're, we're paying toward that unfunded amount. In the coming month, we're paying six hundred and eighty-seven thousand toward it. Okay. Um, yeah, I, I had particular attention to these numbers because a, a district that I was observing. Was talking about their unfunded amount being in the multi-million digit number. And that when they were complaining about the bad return, Calper's response was, well, we have a bad return. Because we don't have all the money to invest. So maybe if you could pay some of your unfunded amounts. We could have invested it and made money. Um, but I just, it made me think about the unfunded amount and where we are at that. So thank you for letting me get clarification.
Thank you. I actually have a question. And this is just out of curiosity. So we have these unfunded amount, right? So let's say like I am participating in Calpers, right? My life expectancy is like another twenty years and after a year I die. Do we get credit for those nineteen years not used?
We do.
Oh, cool. Thanks.
You can't get travelers jumped on.
Any other discussion on registered demands? Thank you. Item twenty directors reports. Anyone really want to go today or Monday's okay? Item twenty-one, general managers report. We have the finance report and public affairs report, either of these today.
Uh, yes, the public affairs report will be today.
Good afternoon again. Thank you for allowing me to give you this quick report. I have a short PowerPoint that highlights some of the activities of the public affairs office during the past month. And then additional updates are in your packet. Although, although we are continuing to slow down during the summer months, we still have been very active within the desert hot springs community. Some of the more notable events included our project wet professional development workshops for local educators. If you recall, that's the event that we partnered with CDWD on. Um, it was very well attended. And more than a third of the participants were from desert hot springs. We were very, very well represented. Um, it felt like we were dominating the rhythm there. So it was really good turnout. Um, also, we participated in the Greater Coachella Valley Installation, Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce. Uh, installation and business dinner on June twentieth. Yours truly was installed on the City of Desert Hot Springs Chamber Board and you can expect new and improved. Effort here in desert hot springs as we continue to redefine the chamber and its role here in our city. Lastly, I also wanted to highlight yesterday's live stream blood drive. Want to thank everyone who came out and participated. We had more than twenty life-saving donations and we had a great mix of both community and employee participation. And it was really, really good to see. Another important event to mention is our ongoing monthly water talks. Last month, we hosted Chris Palmer, the Regional Public Affairs Manager from CSDA. Who highlighted special districts and the important role they play within our lives. Next month, we'll have Jeremy Wit- Witty, who is the General Manager from Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control. He's going to be speaking about the importance of fixing water leaks to avoid standing water, which is a breeding ground for mosquitoes. Our partnership with the Desert Hot Springs Recreation Center is continuing. Last month, we provided four presentations to students at the center and we focused on where we get our water. Um, our direct and our indirect water use and our sub-basin. We have four more sessions this month and we'll be talking about conservations and we will also be talking about. Um, uh, water jobs within the water industry. In June, we successfully completed the twenty twenty-three water quality report. A copy of the English report was mailed to all homes. Before Ju- July first, both the English and the Spanish versions are available on the MSWD website. At MSWD.org forward slash CCR. We are also promoting the report on our social media channels and on our paid advertisements this month. Our June issue of the Water Matters Newsletter highlighted our recent water quality talk. Um, our summer conservation tips and our MSWD Big Heart Awardees. A copy of that newsletter is included in your packet. We're also currently finalizing our July newsletter, which will include information about our summer internship program. Our water quality report and our pass-along fees, including the Desert Hot Springs City Utility Users Tax. And the DWA replenishment assessment, which slightly increased this month. On the outreach front, I also wanted to make note that we are reaching out to our industrial users to provide guidance. On, uh, to those that are interested in taking advantage of our new pre-treatment program. We are currently, uh, creating a section on our website that has a copy of the new pre-treatment application. Fact sheet, Q- FAQs and links to relevant ordinances. We are also partnering with CVCAN to educate its members on the process. We are currently working on a short video series that will cover the steps necessary to be in compliance and participate in the pre-treatment program. We are currently, currently finalizing the video content and I expect we will be recording the video sometime in August. So that it'll be ready for fall distribution. Uh, and last month, uh, but cer- and last but certainly not least, we're continuing to share tips and information. With customers about summer water conservation. In fact, July is smart controller month. And as such, we are heavily promoting the use of smart irrigation meter, uh, smart irrigation devices. In addition to showcasing this information on our social feeds and our paid advertising. We've also partnered with both the Skyborne HOA and the Mission Lakes Country Club. Community to provide additional informations to their residents and their homeowner newsletters. We are also starting a monthly advertorial program with the YouCan Report. And you can expect our first smart controller story to be featured on their website later this month. Here is the recently updated summer conservation video, which you will find on our social media.
Welcome to lifestyles of the smart and water wise. All across desert hot springs and the surrounding area, people are living life to the fullest while conserving water. Let's take a look at how they are reducing water use this summer. The best way to live a lifestyle of the smart and water wise is to celebrate the desert in desert hot springs. Replace your turf and go with an all-natural look instead. By incorporating plants already accustomed to a dry environment, you will need far less water to maintain your landscape. And there are plenty of options to add some color as well. Next, think about the nightlife scene. Irrigating after dark avoids the sizzling summer days. When water can be lost to evaporation. By avoiding watering during daylight hours, water has more time to soak into the ground and reach roots. Creating healthier landscapes. Have the time of your life with a smart irrigation timer. These devices will turn off after rain and could even adjust watering schedules throughout the year. To ensure your plants get what they need to thrive without wasting water. Aim for success. Check your sprinklers to make sure they are pointed at your landscape. Instead of overspraying on driveways and patios. It's no secret, but if you want to live water wise, you need to stop those leaks. Check your irrigation system zone by zone for damaged sprinkler heads and pipe breaks. A clean car always looks more luxurious. Instead of hosing it down in your driveway, take it to a car wash. The water will be recycled, reducing water waste. It will also save time, so you can enjoy the finer things in life. That's all for this edition of lifestyles of the smart and water wise. Till next time, visit MSWD.org for more information about water conservation.
And some of you may remember that video from before, but we did have some outdated material, so we did clean that up and. So that's the new version. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Director Martin?
Question, yes. I think I know what this means, but I've never heard the term before. And that's the term advertorial with, uh, YouCan Report. What exactly do you mean by advertorial? What is that?
It is basically a story, but we are paying to put it in there and it will say paid content in there. So it's a, it's another way of doing an advertisement instead of having just a, a standard box with an image and some text. This will go into some detail and we can control the story in the near.
The informational slash, uh, okay.
Yes.
And with the, uh, YouCan Report, maybe that'll improve our, the coverage that we get from, uh, her. Piece of the paper because it's usually, uh, about everybody, not just us, everybody's pretty negative.
Any other questions or comments for Marion?
Thank you.
And did we have any, uh, questions or comments regarding the? General manager's report as a whole? We'll move on to district council comments.
No comments this evening.
Thank you. Item twenty-three directors comments and requests. We have, uh, general comments, requests for future agenda items and requests for future meetings. Director Martin?
Uh, the only comment that I have was I'm very impressed. I got it in the mail. I was very impressed with the water quality report. That's some very good information. Uh, thanks for getting that out and I'm sure that those people who take the time to actually read it will be, uh, very pleased with what we're. Delivering to their homes. So, thank you.
Director Meyerhoppin?
I've sent an email to you and General Manager Mason, Legal Counsel, about some additional training. And. Ethics. Brown Act. And what is the working relationship? With your, with our attorney? You know, it took me a long time to figure that out. But there is, I see the General Manager Mason looking at me. There is. Certain things that the board of directors are supposed to make sure. That when they're working with the attorney. That we don't put an attorney in a situation, a, a bad situation. Is not used to. Agree with three directors in order to get something. Passed that they want. So. I would like to see those three things come back at a workshop. And we learn a little more about them.
Thank you. Director Deff? Vice President Griffin?
Monday.
And my comment, I just want to, um. Our longtime employee who recently retired, Carol Marin, was involved in a really serious car accident. And I just want to say thank you to our staff and the community. They've kind of rallied behind her and showed her a lot of love and support. And, um, I just wish her and Eddie a quick recovery. I saw her the night before the, the blood drive and, uh, she's all bruised up and. The only thing she was thinking about was how many people registered for the blood drive? Is it going to be okay? So, uh, she just has a really great heart and, uh, wish her and Eddie a speedy recovery. And with that, we already had our closed session. We will adjourn the meeting.